All right, it is 7:01. We'll call the city council meeting to order if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During roll call, all voting members are present. We will open up the public comment. If there's any public comment tonight, you're more than welcome to come forward and just state your name and address for the record. Todd, come on up. Just state your name and address and position if you want.
Todd Richardson, County Commissioner, Mr. Ford.
Can you grab that mic? I'm not sure if it's on or not.
Is that button there?
It's got a red light on.
Push the button.
I think you pressed the button too long. Our microphones here aren't that great.
All right, okay, sounds good. So last time, last time I was here, we talked about... Oh, this is fine.
Todd, you're a county commissioner, correct? And which district do you live in?
Yep, I think everybody heard me when I said that.
Okay.
Yeah, and so anyway, so on, we had approved, the last time I was here, we had just approved all the change orders to the County Road 5 there in the roundabout. And so yesterday, we just approved the final grant funding for it as well, too. And then Justin, Justin's gonna be having a meeting, I believe. Anyway, gonna be having a meeting there for the pre-construction stuff, get everybody, the contractor and everybody on the same page. So, and it looks like we'll be starting it, everything goes right at the end of this month. So, that'll be really good. And again, that was, what was nice about that is with the grant funding, that covered all the extra stuff we were gonna do off the Highway 65. Also, too, it's not gonna be just an overlay going out to Highway 65. We're gonna be taking that all the way down to gravel and starting over. Because originally, when they did that road, it just wasn't up to par for the amount of traffic and everything that's on it. So, that was pretty good. And then I also had a meeting with Justin, myself, to discuss him coming in and actually talking to you guys. So he is planning on doing that. I'm hoping to get it on the next meeting for you guys. But it all depends upon, because he's got maps and different things, and he wants to be able to answer your guys' questions. And it's all part of that communication thing, getting a better communication with the county. But, and then I don't know if you guys know of Rum River Radio. She, she, it's a veteran owned. She started in Athens Township in her basement and has now partnered up there with the American Legion in Cambridge. But she does, it's music, but it's also a lot of podcasts. She does interviews. She just interviewed the senator the other day. So, I had her come in and talk to the commissioners, too, because I think it's a great opportunity. It's another way for us to get our voice out there, you know, meetings and things that you've got going on and stuff like that. So, I can get you guys the information and, you know, you can always talk to her. But I think that's about all I got for you.
All right, well, thank you for coming in.
All right, no problem. Oh, and you guys had a great event yesterday.
Awesome, yeah.
That was unreal, so thanks for doing that and everybody else involved.
Thanks for coming. Any other public comment tonight? All right, hearing none, we will close the public comment. We'll move on to adopting the agenda. Are there any changes other than the addition of a closed session at the end of the night?
That is it, Mayor, Council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, proclamations. So tonight, we have a proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day, which is August 31st. So I'll read that off. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized globally on August 31st to raise awareness about the risk of overdosing, honor the individuals whose lives have been lost from overdosing, and acknowledge the grief felt by families, friends, and other communities. And whereas August is officially recognized as overdose awareness, overdose awareness month, and whereas every human deserves our best efforts to prevent injury and death from overdose, it is imperative to support overdose prevention policies and projects, and to help the wider community understand that drug overdose is a social issue which impacts the victim, families, friends, and communities. And whereas those will be remembered with purple ribbons in downtown Isani in August, and now therefore I, Luke Merrill, interim mayor of the City of Isani, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2025, as overdose awareness day in the City of Isani, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. And I would like to just point out that my mom puts in a lot of work on the overdose awareness stuff. She decorates downtown, and we're gonna have, hopefully have a group this year doing that. So, Mom, if you wanna come forward and say anything on that? Name and address for the record, please.
Denise Merrill, 223 Radler Street, Isani. I started this about five years ago, and I, the color is purple for overdose awareness. And it was about, well, our daughter Shelby passed 10 years ago, coming up on August 31st, which happens to be International Overdose Awareness Day. And I didn't find out that it was that day until about five years in. And it was a way then for me to honor Shelby and others and make awareness that this happens to people of all walks of life. There's a story, there's a story for each person, and how it affects each and every family, family member, friends. It just is a trickle-down effect, the impact that it has. And my ultimate goal is to break the stigma of how people look at the victims of overdose. They think, you know, they're bad people, they're just a bunch of druggies, and, you know, they deserve to die, that's all they're gonna do with their lives. But that's not it at all. Our daughter passed, Luke's sister, Shannon's sister, passed from prescribed medications. She was over, overmedicated, and it built up in her system, and she died from it. So, you know, there's, there are so many different stories, and this is my way of trying to get some awareness out there and color the town a little bit. And last year, I got a little more response, people reaching out, and I've got somebody that's gonna help this year. And her unfortunate loss brought us together. And I just wanna keep growing, and this year, I intend on putting more name plaques of people in the area that have lost their lives, have lost their loved ones. So if anybody is, has somebody that they would like to be recognized on one of our plaques, please, please let us know.
Yeah, if there's anybody that wants to help with that, decorating the downtown purple, I know that's been a thing for, you know, get Main Street a little more beautified and have cool stuff like this. So, I think this is awesome, and obviously, I appreciate it, and our family appreciates it. So, if anybody that wants to come forward for a picture with us, with this, and the chief of police, and grab a picture.
Yeah, I've been out there. The first year I was out there, 12 months, five years.
All right, so if anybody's been curious about the purple downtown in August, that's why. Next, we'll move on to approving the city council meeting minutes. July 15th, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Any questions or concerns on those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Raheman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. July 15th, city council meeting minutes. Any questions or concerns?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. July 23rd, 2025, city council budget work session meeting minutes. Any questions or concerns?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go into announcements. Special election, Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Make sure you get out and vote for that. Committee of the whole meeting, Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Planning commission meeting, Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. City council meeting, Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. City council budget work session, Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, following the city council meeting. Canvassing board meeting, Thursday, August 21st, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. And the park and rec board meeting, Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Are there any council committee reports this evening?
Yeah, one. I had a meeting at the middle school for the Chamber of Commerce. The finance director for the school district gave a presentation on the referendum and what it's being used for and their justification of it, which I took some issue with. It made it sound like an investment, it was gonna pay itself back, but I don't see that happening. The cost is, cost is pretty high, and I don't know. People should look into it and see what they're proposing and figure out if it's worth it.
Any other committee reports?
I have two. I went to my improving fiscal futures policy committee meeting. We discussed there about the stability, stability at the state level with their budget and how it affects the local level. So there is, whatever policies are passed at the state, sometimes, you know, there's not money that follows through with that. So, that was an issue with a lot of the metro cities. So hopefully, we can get some ideas on how to streamline some of that stuff. Also, there's a, a lot of cities voister opinions about keeping local control and trying to keep state out of as many issues at the local level as possible. So that's it for that meeting. And then I had improving service delivery policy meeting, which there's a large concern and a big push from cities to help with the shortage of people who wanna be police officers. And it's a statewide thing, and I'm sure a nationwide thing, but we need to start coming up with creative ideas. If it's fast-track programs or reaching out to high schools and trying to get more kids to become police officers. Because right now, we're fighting over, cities are just fighting over a smaller pool of people who wanna be police officers. So, I'll be looking forward to some ideas on how to fix that. And then I plan on talking to our House rep and then our state senator, try to see what we can do with their branch of government. That's all I had.
Yeah, and I'll mention, I had the two first LMC meetings of mine for the year as well. Basically mirrored the whole, that same thing. Most of the cities are worried about government preemption. That's not just rural cities. Metro cities are worried about it, too. So, I'm gonna work to, I have the HR committee and the economic development type committee. So if you guys have any state issues that you'd like me to advocate for the city for, related to HR, economic stuff, I'll be working on some of that for the next meeting. And then towards the end, I'll come back with all of the changes and recommendations that we are making to the state. But if anybody has any recommendations from the city or from even just residents, just please, please reach out. Any other council committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to business item K1, resolution to consider approving a special event permit for Rum River BMX 2025 Minnesota State Finals.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we do have their event. It is scheduled for August 22nd, going from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. August 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and August 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. as well. Total for a three-day event. They are estimating between 800,000 people to attend per day. They're requesting to use camping in the grass area south of the Isani indoor arena. They'll have additional portables, and they will be cleaning up after their event. They've requested 10 barricades and 25 no, small no parking signs from the city. They're also requesting to have the $100 cleanup fee deposit waived, and they have submitted all appropriate documentation and information.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Councilmember Lundin, second by myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I know we're looking forward to that community event. It's a, the BMX does a lot of great things for our community, so thank you for doing that.
I was just gonna also add that they, that, I, I don't think anybody's foresight in that whole thing would be where it's at today. I don't think anybody realized how big it would be here. They are, this arena is ranked in the top five in the state.
Country.
Country, I mean, yeah. So, there is not many other indoor arenas, so they, so people have to travel, and they choose to come here over other cities that have it. So, you know, hat off to Rum River BMX for building it to where they're at. I never thought it would be as big as it is. And I've been part of it since adult thing.
And it's ran by volunteers, so it's not taxpayer dollars going into it. It's a great volunteer group, and I think that's huge for our communities, just volunteer groups, so. All right, we'll move on to K2, resolution to consider awarding the quote for the Isani Community Center exterior renovation project. Ms. Wood.
Mayor and Council, so we did have $65,792 budgeted within the 2025 capital improvement plan for exterior improvements of the community center. Those improvements included windows, siding, fascia, and some exterior door work. Staff had work to collect and solicit quotes for this project, and we received three quotes. Some of the quotes have different options provided, so hopefully you had an opportunity to take a look at those quotes within the packet. We received quotes from Liberty Exteriors, Minor Construction LLC, RMK Contracting Incorporated. Some of them, two of the three, replaced the windows, one does not, and they have some different options there. So, myself and Mr. Becker can answer some questions that you may have.
I do have some questions regarding the Liberty quote. I see that might be someone here from Liberty. If you could come forward and I can ask you those couple of questions, just to make sure we have apples to apples here on some of these bids. Just state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Eddie Wilkinson, 2563 325th Cambridge, Minnesota.
Thank you. So my first question is, or a couple of my questions are regarding the windows. See, it says Thermotech Series Windows. Which series line is that?
The, that's the high-end, I, I believe it's a...
100?
Yeah, I think so. That has the R value. And I, I'm not, so the guy who wrote this estimate is Eric, who's in Bemidji.
Okay.
I got this phone call 10 minutes before this meeting.
Okay. Do you usually do, use a Thermotech 100 Series Windows?
They're very good windows, yeah.
Yeah.
For the price, it's the best window we think you can get.
Sure.
Because they're very efficient, probably just as good as an Anderson. If you look at the R value or the rating on the window, they come with a lifetime warranty, and I believe if, even if they get broke, someone hit it with a bike or something, I believe they come out and replace the glass for free as part of the warranty.
Okay, so that is the 100 Series window?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Because I know the other quote was 100 Series window, and there are cheaper series of, of that brand windows, so. Okay, and then on the windows additionally, the, is the interior trim and painting included with the bid, like the finish work on the inside?
Yes.
Generally, okay. Okay.
You wouldn't have to do anything else.
Okay.
Is what I, you know, we'd install it, it'd be done, finished.
Okay, that would make sense. And then one of the other contractors that was out here said that the soffit venting, there basically is none. Did you guys notice that when you put in your bid? And if so, did you account for, for venting in the soffit with their replacement? Or would that just be something that you would do?
No, we, yeah, that's just something that we'd automatically do anyways.
Okay.
We always use a vented soffit. If you ever look, sometimes they have a pattern, like one piece will be not vented and the next one vented, and they stagger it.
Yep.
But we use usually all vented.
Okay, and then if you open that up and say you don't see chutes in there or anything required to meet code on that, what would, how would you usually do that? Would that, something like chutes be included in that, or is that something that would be a supplement?
Anytime, anytime that we uncover anything and we find it doesn't comply with the code issue, and we, and we are pulling a permit on doing the work, we generally would have to upgrade that or make them aware of it, you know? And to put chutes in, you know, those are, that's not a really big deal.
Right.
Those are pretty cheap. You know, it's something that I'm sure would probably just probably do for you.
Okay.
You know, but if we, no, say that we ran into a bigger issue, that would be, you know, cost more than something like 100 or two.
Mm-hmm.
You know, probably have to bring it up and get a change order written or something.
Okay, sounds good. And then there was a, so the board and batten, I noticed that you guys had an upcharge of 4,300 for that. The other contractor, one was at 2,000 for that, and the other was at 750. Is there any negotiation room on that, or is that, I don't know if that's something that we can do as a city, because it's significantly more expensive for the board and batten through y'all?
So, sometimes, you guys, I think in your scenario, when you do board and battened, you don't have a backer in place the way it's currently done. So we were factoring, happened to add a backer.
Okay.
So that board and batten has nailing, so the board doesn't just fall off over, you know, if it's just nailed to a thin board. So, I believe that's why there was a little extra cost, you noticed that you didn't wanna have to worry about that because of warranty issue or something.
Sure.
But with that said, I, I'm not telling that I wouldn't negotiate, like, I'm the owner and I believe in the cause, you know? I also am from the community, so I like that, you know, the advantages we get from it. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy to help.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions for this particular contractor?
Was that also adding that other door?
That was the, yeah, one of them was the westward, the west side door. And I did have a question on the resolution. It says both doors on the south-facing. It should say just the west side door on the south-facing.
I thought they were gonna add one.
Yeah, just on the west, the west.
I thought it was on this side, but over to this end and take that window out.
It was on the south side.
Yep.
Yeah, it was on the south side.
The westward door.
And then, yeah, we're gonna do something different with that.
Yep, and that wasn't, that wasn't here as a, a supplement to the, the base bid. Any other questions on that one? All right, well, thank you for coming in. Well, I think we'll have some discussion on this and see where we're gonna go. And if we have any more questions, I'll call you back up.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I said, if we do, as we're doing this project, if we do it or whatever, some smaller things like come up or even, you know, whatever, we're, you know, we're from here, so we're happy to help you guys and work through.
Okay. Sounds great, thank you. So what do you, what do you guys think about, you know, if you look at the, the bids here, his bid was competitive, just the, the board and batten was higher. Do we try and negotiate that down to get the board and batten, or do you guys just wanna bypass the board and batten, basically it's just cosmetic?
Can we piecemeal it out?
As far as?
Or does it have to be one whole thing?
You mean with different?
Like on siding, RMK is at 30,800, but then Liberty is at 30,000, but then there's addition of the other item that was included with the... I'm sorry, maybe it wasn't the siding, maybe it was a different item. Some of them are including multiple things within one price. So RMK includes three things within the siding price, but then in the Liberty, it's a $1,500 item and a $1,500 item. So if you increase the siding by 3,000 to 2,100, then it's 33,100 versus 30,800.
Mm-hmm. I think that might be tough, because, you know, usually the siding and windows are sort of done together by the same person, but... What do you guys think?
We'd negotiate that board and batten, too.
Okay.
I'd be willing to come down to that other, if that were helping.
Okay. I, I think that's fair. If we're gonna do the board and batten at the, you know, the other, the next closest on the board and batten was $2,000. So I think that would be a, a good thing to do. That would bring his bid down to 75,160. That's with new windows, new siding, the fascia, basically everything they wanted. And that would be the lowest bid. That's my two cents on it.
I'm okay with that, but... And we don't have to go out to re-bid, since he's here. If the other people were here, they could negotiate, they'd have the right to negotiate, too. I just don't wanna leave anybody out on this process.
Yeah, I don't know how that generally works, Ms. Wood.
Because it's not a formal bid, we did just receive quotes. It is your prerogative to negotiate.
Okay.
I just don't like this one bid refinished.
I, I will add...
Yeah, that one's, I think the refinished window one is out. I, I think it needs new windows.
I think the whole object was, is the windows, it's, needs new glass, it's not meeting it. I just, I, I think that one needs to go away, and it's just gonna be the other two.
Yep, I agree.
I would like to just add, though, we haven't historically done it like that. And so it might be something that we wanna consider letting everyone who gives a quote or something, let them know that there could be discussion. Legally, we are able to, however, it's not typically what we've done. Just wanted to let you know. If we could go to the resolution, Mayor?
Yeah.
And what, what needed clarification, please?
Uh, let's see here. It says, in the third, whereas, the first bullet point says, replacement of the south-facing windows, plural, with full window doors and side lights. We're only doing one window. It would be the one southwest-facing window only, not the southeast.
Do you, are you asking what that means?
No, I just wanna make sure, we're only doing one.
We're only doing one window? Is that your, okay.
Yep, and the resolution says two, so I just wanted to change that, because it's only one. Yep. And that's how the bids are written for one as well, so it's just a
Okay.
Small typo.
I'll clarify that.
The bids are for one.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I will modify this resolution.
Okay.
So the bullet will say, replacement of the one southwest-facing window with full window doors and side lights.
Or south-facing window on the west? However, however it works, I think you guys understand.
South-facing.
West-side window? I mean, because there's a west and an east-side window on this.
Okay, got it. I'll make sure I put the word one, though, in there, just to clarify, it's one window.
Sounds good.
And then I will also modify the resolution to be awarding this to Liberty and Exteriors LLC in the amount of 75,160.
If that's what we decide.
If that's what's approved.
Okay. What are you guys' thoughts on?
I just wanna know if the, you know, it's just nice to have clarification, what there's gonna be a charge. There, you know, there's always going to be a change order. But I mean, they get in there and they find that the, you know, the king studs are rotted off, and they gotta do some reframing. You know, are you talking time, material, at X amount of dollars, 10% over cost? I mean, that's just a kind of a clarification we'd wanna see. I know there's a lot of times that's how you write up an estimate, is
That makes sense.
To, to make sense, so that we do know if it is rotten, and the chances are, it could very well be that they need to replace some studs on this side. Just kinda get an idea that, you know, if we do find that this extra work is gonna be XXX.
Instead of being shocked at whatever price we hear.
And then all of a sudden come out with a change order, where all of a sudden they come in and say it's gonna be, you know, $600 for Come out with a change order where all of a sudden they come in and say it's gonna be, you know, six hundred dollars for extra labor and some studs. They do, I don't, we don't need to go sit there and fight over a change order.
So like an hourly rate, have that laid out?
Rate or or something that would, you know, in that effect. I've written up a lot of estimates that I've done that unforeseen issues or time material at X amount of dollars an hour and percentage over cost.
Is that written anywhere in our, in our bid? No, okay. Sure.
No, we didn't ask for that, so if there was something that came up that was in addition, it would be, as was mentioned, a change order and then they would provide an hourly rate, especially, you know, sometimes they get into something, they're like, well, there's mold, we have to take something out. They do usually, we would ask for an hourly rate and end a full estimate for the project, um but we typically have entered into that once it's a problems found.
Okay.
And I would like to say, I know that I can just text it here, but what he meant, if I should be, so we had an measure and we took some, um, you know, had, you know, dig into it and he didn't perceive that there's really gonna be a lot of issues, he really didn't.
Sure.
And and we normally, on an older project that you can't kinda get into, sometimes you might run into that stuff, but sometimes, you know, I agree with what the gentleman said, I mean, a lot of time you can run into this, but on this project, they don't take for long too.
Okay.
I I'm really for sure that we've been calling for it, so. He was pretty thorough on what he looked at. He knew that we didn't wanna run into that with the bid.
Right.
Any thoughts on the upgrading to Anderson one hundreds, you guys are fine with the the Motax?
I don't think the, just on my reading online and talking to a couple of contractors, I don't think the upgrade cost of the extra was at sixty-eight hundred is gonna pay dividends, I mean, it's pretty much the same window. But.
They're not, they're not Windsor windows from Menards. That would be a, you know, that and this other one was is just refinish the windows because they're in great shape. Well, aluminum windows, they transfer heat loss through that aluminum. They, in in, you know, you know, you look at them, the window panes are shot because you can see the clouding in between the glass. So if that's the case, they're not in great shape.
Yeah.
You know, so I I that that's where this other bid is, like, I I wouldn't even wanna consider that.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're gonna spend that money trying to refinish them and we're still in the same boat we were in before.
I think we probably all agree on getting rid of the middle quote. The the minor one.
Yes.
Okay. So the total with Liberty, uh like I said, with the two thousand dollar board and batten would be seventy-five thousand. Was that seventy-five thousand one sixty, I think you had said, otherwise, the RMK contracting bid for the same work is eighty-three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars with the same windows, um.
Using the same windows, right.
The same windows as the other bid, so to me, the Liberty one makes more sense.
And I like the fact they are from Cambridge, so there are, there's a, there's a few Liberty trucks that are actually in town, so the people live in this town.
All of these contractors are all local, so that's awesome to see.
The other one, so, I just like the fact Cambridge is, lack of better words, our sister city.
Sure.
Um, and that's trying to keep it a little more local. I don't know, I would recommend using Liberty.
I'll second that, if you're making a motion.
Yep, I'll motion it.
So there's a motion from Councilmember Lundin and a second from Councilmember Heeman to approve the Liberty exteriors at the amount of seventy-five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you for coming in and being able to answer some questions. And thank you for being able to negotiate with us too, that's nice, so. Yep, saves people some money. All right, item K three, uh resolution, consider authorizing the purchase and install installation of a new air conditioning unit at the Asante Community Center.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so we got some quotes from Sun Mechanical on the air conditioner unit. Uh, had them all because it wasn't working and they did give me a quote to charge it, but they don't know how long it'll last, that was eighteen seventy-five. And then they gave me two different uh air conditioner models, uh same brand, I think the one is just a little more efficient for, it was nine thousand fifty-five oh one, and the other one thirty-four S was eight thousand seventy-two fifty-six. And I think we just go with the eight thousand bid, the one thirty-four S.
Sure, so I did have a question on this, um, I talked to, I know the owner of a, one of the biggest HVAC companies in Minnesota and he, I sent him the the estimates and he said they're very good estimates, but uh the ten percent material markup, is that something that we can um negotiate? Because that's not the industry standard anymore to do those.
That's our contract.
Oh, that's the contract, okay.
That's because they're contracted to take care of our stuff.
So we're stuck, okay, well, that's fair then. Um, and then I did some research, uh again, and I would agree with you that we go with the eight thousand dollar unit. Uh, in Minnesota, the more efficient unit, you're never gonna see the payback on that and the lifespan of the unit and the more efficient units, when they break, they're more expensive to fix. So I I think I would like to see the uh eight thousand dollar one myself. Thoughts?
I agree.
Steve, this is your, do you wanna, do you see those bids or?
This is up his alley.
I'm just trying to look and see what the. Okay, it is four fifty-four. Um, four fifty-four basically is probably about thirty percent more cost over four ten A.
Would you like to uh see if we can get other bids or what are your thoughts on it? Do you think the price is fair or, long term, would you rather see a different unit?
Well, company I work for, Bryant is the same as Carrier, they're the same company. I, Josie, how's that work with with the with this? I know that we have a service agreement with Sun Con, Sun Mechanical. But on something like this, is that fit in their agreement or is that something that we have to have multiple bids for?
I'm not gonna say that we can't go out for multiple bids, but we have typically, when things are um gone out and we weren't scheduling it in the CIP for something and was more of a timely issue, I would say that the norm has been that we have gone with our service contractor to get that.
I'm just looking at it, you're, this time of year, I haven't had my AC on in two weeks. I mean, it, you're, you're kinda at that line right now. I would definitely wanna go over and take a look at it and submit it, get a bid submitted from Apollo. Which I don't have, I have no control over what the pricing would be, I have not, no control on that.
Could you, is that something you could look at and tell us if maybe it's worth fixing with the temperature?
If it's, if it's an R twenty-two, no, it's not worth fixing.
Fair enough.
R twenty-two is gone.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And if somebody has R twenty-two right now, it's like thousand dollars an ounce. I mean, it's, it's just un- ridiculous, same thing's gonna happen to four ten A. And that's gonna, that's gonna start, the prices of that starting to increase. I will tell you that four fifty-four right now is almost as expensive as four ten A because you can't get it. It's, there's, there's contractors that cannot get any four fifty-four.
So what are people putting in for refrigerant in?
Four fifty-four is what you have to do.
Okay.
Because you can't, there is some contractors, depending on the unit, I might still be able to get a four ten A system for a four ton. There is, there is certain suppliers that have them. So you might be able to still find one or two here and there. So. This is four, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the numbers on it, um. But I would, you know, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even need to go out there, I could see what you're having here. Uh, you know, size wise, that's all I need, the information I need.
Okay.
And I could probably get something turned around tomorrow morning.
So would, would this be a situation where we could maybe approve up to an amount and if we get a lower bid?
Or you can just say, let's, let's table it until, until.
Two weeks.
Meeting, I honestly, I don't think it's gonna make that difference in the, right now, this time of year.
Yeah, we have.
Just with a lot of people in there, that building does get hot. Mr. Christensen, you, can you come on forward and?
Oh, come on. Good, I was, uh, I was just gonna say, a uh, a company that I use, a local company, I'm assuming it's not the one you got the bid from, is uh North, North Country Air. Uh, Kyle, he's over by Long Lake, um, they do everything, commercial, residential, and I found him to be uh really fair and able to improvise on, you know, on different things, so. Um, every, yeah, every time I got a bid, he always outbid everybody, so he might be able to save you guys some money.
Okay.
So I can get you that information too, if you'd like.
Okay.
Because it ain't gonna hurt to get, you know, extra estimates, I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's.
Just.
And like I said, I don't, I I think this time of year right now, I mean, we're not, they're not really predicting any scorching weather.
The next three days, but then after that, this thing would be fixed by then anyway.
But I've got, and I also have gotten down to the State Fair and sat down there and I had to go buy a jacket because it was so flipping cold, I couldn't breathe. So it, it's, it's a crapshoot, no matter which way you look at it.
If nothing else, maybe you might be able to save the taxpayers some money going that road, this route.
All right.
So I'll get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, my recommendation is if we know for sure that we're not gonna repair the unit and that would be with our contractor and we do wanna look at getting quotes, more quotes, I think that we should follow the typical process that we've done and put it out for that quote. Um, publishing the quote to the people who have requested to be on our contractor list. We can also reach out to multi, to others, but um I think in all fairness, we should put it out on that one listserv that we have.
I would, just to make things easier for everybody, I would go by with what they're ax- asking here. Uh, the single stage, four ton, uh, that's basically all they need to know at this point.
The only other thing that will be, uh, this contractor is at a handicap because their prices are now public, so.
Right.
That's the one damage of going, getting these quotes in front in the public meeting, everybody sees them, it's very easy to underbid them by just even a hundred dollars, so that I would caution on that.
Yeah, and I, I did reach out to one of my contacts and he said that bid was significantly less than the bid would have been from them. He was kinda shocked at the price, so I think the price is actually really good myself, I don't, I don't know, Steve, you're, do you have any idea if that's, seems like a reasonable price? I mean, from what I'm looking at, it seems pretty fair, eight thousand dollars for a commercial type building is.
No, it's not, this isn't a commercial style air conditioner.
Sure.
The one that we have at City Hall is, because that's, that's three face, this is just a standard residential air conditioner that's in there. Um.
That does seem high.
Well.
I don't think so.
I I look at the, I I kinda know what coils cost, I think that's a little high, um, in my opinion. Condenser looks a little low, but there's a lot of caveats with using four fifty-four because it is slightly flammable and you're supposed to have sensors in the coils so that it shuts the furnace off if that thing produces a leak. That, and that's a lot of things that people don't understand, this new Freon is flammable, slightly flammable. That's what happened when we were, when the pair, when we were removed from the Paris Accord in twenty sixteen. And twenty twenty, we were put back into it and the Paris Accord said you have to get rid of all fluorocarbons. And fluorocarbons is your twenty-two, four ten A, those are all being removed, so this is the standards they went to. You can search air conditioners exploding and you'll see tons of videos of them blowing up. But most of those are thirty-two, thirty-two is more flammable than four fifty-four. So it's, unfortunately, that's where we're going. You know, you get somebody that's deathly afraid of gas and they got electric appliances in and they want an air conditioner also, you gotta tell them it's flammable. Now they get, now they're even more nervous.
So on this topic, what do you guys think we should do?
I'm gonna stay neutral on this, you guys make your decision.
You know, Ms. Wood, do you know how warm it gets over there during an event? I know it's not that warm outside, but if you have a big event, it gets.
It gets hot.
It gets hot in there and I, I don't know that we wanna wait another two weeks and I know I'll get complaints about it being hot in there.
Well, the other thing to consider, and I don't know, that's maybe a Lundin question, but we are cooling that entire facility, running the one. Um, so I don't know how great that is for that one unit, obviously it was probably best to have two, given the size, but if that one goes out, then we, I mean, it was struggling, we were over there with full capacity for the mayor's luncheon and it was running as cold as it could go.
Enough to take the edge off until we replace the other one, probably.
I don't think we're gonna get a better bid, but if you guys want to, we can definitely go out.
I like the eight thousand dollar bid.
You're making a motion to approve this one?
Yeah, the eight thousand.
I'll second it.
Motion approved by Councilmember Holmgren, uh second by Councilmember Heeman, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
But I would like to make sure, um, Todd Lundin, if he has that contract, to make sure they're on that, our contractors list.
Oh, Todd Christensen?
Yep.
I don't know, I don't believe I've seen them, so we'll reach out.
Yeah, I've never heard of them.
Reach out to them.
I'd like to see them on our list.
And did that pass five oh?
Yeah, did you abstain or did you?
I voted, it's, at this point, it doesn't matter, I just, if you're gonna make that discussion, I will abstain from that discussion.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero, correct? Well, that's good, the community center's getting some good upgrades tonight, much needed for quite a while there, so.
Yeah, it's, it's due for some upgrades.
Yep. All right, K four, resolution to consider accepting the purchase or repair of the Public Works on-call truck.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, yeah, so I, I got all the quotes uh for the new engine. Uh, I also got a quote on a state bid truck. Um. All in there, the new truck was thirty-six thousand seven seven nine point six three. Um, we got three estimates on the trucks, um. JB Auto Services was eight thousand two hundred and twenty-one thirty-six. Uh, Ken's Repair and Sales in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and twenty-one eighty-eight. And Fast Repair Automotive was nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-two fifty-six.
And that was for, those were all reman engines and uh I did look at all the bids and I noticed that um, the two of the three all mentioned the same three-year, hundred thousand mile warranty, so I reached out to JB uh Auto Repair and asked if his was a warranty, because he's probably using the same engine and it is the same three-year, hundred thousand mile warranty. And he did send an updated bid, I believe, um, to Public Works, so we have that. Uh, so that's something, obviously you wanna warranty on something like that. So I thought we should reach out on that, um, so all those bids are apples to apples, it's just, what do you guys think of each contractor? Or do you wanna buy a new truck or?
What year is that truck?
Two thousand seventeen.
How many miles are on that?
Seventy-eight?
Yeah, I was gonna say sixty-something, I guess I didn't.
It needs an engine already?
That's the problem with that engine.
Very common, it.
I figured the transmission would be.
Putting back in it.
I figured a transmission would be in need with all the stop and go.
Yeah, I think that when we looked at, it wasn't necessarily the miles, but it was about two hundred thousand hours because it idles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How's the rest of the truck look?
Um, the, the frame and stuff is solid, but the box and cab is starting to get some rust going. The front seat is um wore out, but you get a seat, they're not that expensive either. But uh Nick and I were talking, like, if you don't spend the ten grand now and all that, it's, you're really only spending like twenty-one thousand on the truck.
I would personally like to see us repair it and I think the, the one bid for eight, eight thousand two hundred something dollars is a pretty dang good bid. Also, I did notice that the new truck has a turbo, um, and we have found out the hard way that idle hours are hard on turbos, look at Travis shaking his head. So what happens is turbos, they're, they're meant to be driven and you get the high RPM, so you get the oil pressure to them at idle. They don't get enough oil pressure, so they break down really fast, you're gonna be replacing turbos on something like that. So I'm opposed to even us owning any trucks with turbos for the amount of idle time we have, as Ms. Wood just stated. So I, I know their problems, so that's, that's my main detractor from buying a new truck, um, just because they have a turbo and it's a, that's gonna be a five thousand dollar expense every five years for us on that truck.
I'll make a motion to rebuild for that eight thousand bid.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
Motion from uh Councilmember Heeman, second from Councilmember Peters. Motion from, uh, Councilmember Heeman, second from Councilmember Peterson, all in favor of the awarding the low bid at eight thousand two hundred dollars roughly, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries five zero.
Can I just ask for clarification, so I believe that the amount was-
Eighty-six oh six.
Not to exceed ten thousand six hundred and twenty-one and eighty-eight cents, uh, for replacement. That's what the resolution said.
Yeah, well, the bid, all the bids are under that, that's why I just put it that way.
Does that include the contingency, if there was any issues?
It didn't, it was just the highest bid for putting the engine in.
Okay.
So, sorry, it's eighty-six oh six and eighty cents on that J B bid, if that changes.
That exact number, then, eighty-six oh six.
And there was a motion, a second on the floor, did we vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
It just, we had to readjust those numbers, because I said eighty-two-ish, I thought that was the number.
Ms. Wood said eighty-two at some point, so that's...
I'm sorry, Mayor and Council, I was looking at the resolution, and so, and it had, he had included one of the bids, so I'm just making sure I get the resolution changed.
Yep.
So it'll be for what was presented as option two, would be what was approved in the resolution, in the amount of eighty-six hundred and six dollars and eighty cents, um, it, which is what passed.
Okay, sounds good, and that's the good thing about that three-year, hundred-thousand-mile, well, maybe we can plan for a newer truck in three years. I know that one's pushed out to twenty thirty-two in our C I P, so...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you're gonna get that long, but we'll see.
Yep. All right.
I believe the bid is eighty-two twenty-one thirty-six, though. We don't pay, we don't pay sale tax, correct? That's why, that's why I put in the resolution at the eighty-two.
That's where that eighty-two came from, okay, so that was eighty-two twenty-one thirty-six.
Yeah, because the, on their quote, they added sales or tax in there, we, we don't pay that.
Got it.
I just normally minus that when they do that.
Sounds good. So we got all that. All right, next we'll move on to consent agenda, I would like to thank QuickTrip for donating to the mayor's luncheon. Um, they had donated two hundred bucks, so we could buy wa, I think we bought water with that, so thank you, QuickTrip, uh, for that donation. And then I'd also like to make an announcement that the fire department will have a roundup and a fundraiser booth set up at the liquor store, August first through September eleventh, uh, with the touch-and-truck and meet-and-greet type, uh, events, one day in that window, I'm not sure exactly which day, but, uh, so if you want to donate to the fire department, that's a great way to do it. I also want to give a shout-out to Chief Myers and the city staff for all their hard work trying to find a suitable officer to hire, and I'm very excited to see that we're gonna, uh, be hiring an officer and be fully staffed, uh, it's essential for keeping our city state, safe. Uh, any other questions or concerns on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries five zero, the consent agenda is approved. Uh, next, we'll move into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision two B, for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges against an individual subject to the authority of the city council. So we'll move into closed session, um, and then we'll come back out of closed session when we're done. We need a motion to move into closed session, correct?
Correct.
Motion going to closed session.
Motion, second.
Motion to go into closed session by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I did notice I forgot to ask one thing.
What's that?
Um, in the, the grant agreement, it says the completion is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.